Hi everyone, welcome to the Women Are Worthy Show and joining us today is Ms. Tracy Byers. She's running for Kennesaw City Councilwoman.
Shameless plug. Please vote on May 22nd.
Vote, 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 vote.
Vote Byers.
Vote Byers. Well Tracy, now for those of you, she's running for city council for the city of Kennesaw. And you guys know how I feel about Kennesaw and Acworth now. They're my babies. So Tracy, tell us, why do you think, why do you want to run for city council?
Well, I've played around with the idea for a couple of years. I've been really involved with the city. And looking at the new city council, I have a great amount of respect for the guys that are on there. But I spent the last three years as Chair of the Kennesaw Downtown Development Authority. And it's just a really exciting time to be in Kennesaw. We have so much teed up, we have so much going on. We've got so much potential. In my own life, my personal life, my work life, I'm a big connector. And I think, I feel like I can do that here. And I think I can bring a little piece to the situation. I don't know, if you follow Kennesaw Politics, we're a spirited city.
Spirited.
And I think it takes a spirited leader. And I think I'm that person.
So, okay, you worked, did you have your own business? Were you working in corporate America? What? Tell us, give us.
Kind of done it all. I worked in corporate America right out of college. And then I worked in a lot of different media agencies, newspapers, direct mail, radio. But when I went to have kids, I decided I wanted to kind of engineer my life and make it my life. You know, so that my kids could grow up at home with me and I could be at school and be at the plays and be at baseball. So I decided to take my skills, which I was already using in an agency, and do it myself. So I became a marketing consultant. I spent lots of years working with builders, both residential and commercial. Writing their profiles, helping them promote their businesses. And then the economy fell off.
That economy burnt the family.
Yeah, but at the same time, it fell off. We were also starting to transition into digital media instead of print media. So it was a great time for me to change it. But it's been really great for me to be able, like I said, to raise my three boys. They're raised now, they're 21, 19, and about to be 15.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Three boys?
I know, right?
Wow. Now, if you can raise three boys and they're productive, you can, you can be on the city council, okay?
Yeah. Funny story, I'd be out with the three boys, and if you know boys, you know how active they are. And I would love when people come up and say, "Don't you want to try for a girl?" I'd always be like, "I can't handle these three, why would I try for another?"
How, um, what are their names, by the way?
Teddy, Max, and Brock.
Hi Teddy, Max, and Brock. Your mom's running!
They know, trust me, they know all too well.
Because they've been involved.
They've been helping with signs and posters and calling and just everything.
What I'd like to do is, because we have interns here, can you please talk to them or speak to them about the importance of, because when I talk to them about local government, that's what we talk about, not the really, the bigger elections we talk to them. Because that, that's what affects you the most and right away. Can you please speak to them and tell them the importance of voting or getting involved in local, local city official or voting and things like that?
Well, as you said, I mean, you actually are most affected and can have the biggest impact at a local level. It's very, very important. I think, you know, if you, you can't complain if you're not going to get in the process. You just can't. And if you follow organizations, you see, what's the 80/20 rule where 20% of the people do everything, do 80% of the work? It shouldn't be that way. I mean, we should get more people involved. And in Kennesaw, we definitely want more young people involved. I mean, at the end of the day, we're a college town. And we'd like to hear, you know, what the young people want. And when you, when you plan for a city, when you work in a city environment in the political side, you're planning for the generation 25 years from now. You're not planning for next week, honestly. You're planning 25 years from now. And it's great to get input from that generation.
So what do you think you're bringing to the table that others, not taking away from other people's talent, but what are you bringing to the table that Kennesaw really needs?
Well, I've had immense amount of experience with the city. When I first got involved, and of course I did baseball and I did PTA and Room Mom and all that. But when I first got involved in the city, I joined an organization called the Kennesaw Citizens Advisory Commission. And this is a group that, you know, different department heads come to them, you know, the city, different people in the city come to them and ask for them to help solve issues. Like they might look at an issue like, you know, should we charge more for people at the rec center who aren't, who aren't, you know, city residents? Should we, you know, what are we going to do about stormwater? Should we call it a fee, a tax? You know, they ask those kind of questions. They go to that group, that group has big discussions, they go among their own groups, their own circles, talk it out, see what people think, you know, see what the public thinks. They come back and they give some solutions to the mayor and council to consider when they're making their decisions. So I spent a year with that group and learned a lot. I mean, it just, it's amazing to me how a city runs and the dynamics and the different people and the things involved. So I learned a lot there. And then I was appointed to the Kennesaw Downtown Development Authority the next year. So I left KCAC to go to DDA, I know everything has an acronym.
Lost name.
But the Kennesaw Downtown Development Authority is in charge of, or helps the economic development group in the city. So they're, you know, we do ribbon cuttings, they do welcome new businesses, look for new businesses, make sure old businesses are happy being there. You know, they're the pipeline between the city really and the businesses. We did lifestyle things, like we ran the Dinner at the Depot, the city's food truck event. It's a, you know, it's a great way to talk to people and learn what they want. Don't you love it?
Were you responsible or part of the people responsible for that?
Largely for the last three years.
Oh my God, shameless plug.
It's a great event.
Oh my God, phenomenal. Thank you. I didn't know you were responsible for that. Thank you.
I am, and I mean, and I miss it. I had stepped down from it to run for this, and I truly miss it. Going to miss it this year. But it was a great opportunity to meet people, see what they want. I mean, we'd have college students and young families and older people. In fact, I had a group, they called themselves the 80's Club, that would come to our Dinner at the Depot. Just all kinds of people. So it was great to talk to people, see what they want, you know, see what they love that the city's doing, see what they don't love so much, see what they like to see. It gave me an immense amount of background, you know, a front row seat, if you will, to what's going on. And yeah, I think all of that knowledge is going to, would help me in this position.
What is it about Kennesaw that you personally like? Just tell us, for those who maybe have just moved to Kennesaw and they're not familiar, for those who don't live in Kennesaw, can you talk about some things that you like, whether it's, you know, sites, you know, places, sites that they can go visit? What is it about? Because I love Kennesaw, but I want to hear from you, what is it about Kennesaw?
Well, I mean, for starters, we have an excellent Parks and Rec department.
Hot spot!
I don't know if you go to a lot of the events, but we've got parades, you know, we've got barbecue fest, we've got, you know, pigs and peaches, it's called actually. We've got all kinds of events. And I think we have something for everybody. And I just, I love a parade, so I'm always out at the parades. I get a front row seat there. But it's a, it's a very safe town. I think people come here because they like, you know, the safety part of it. It's a very comfortable town. It's, people are friendly. We offer something for different age groups, like I said. And now we're starting to have housing for different age groups with the, a couple of luxury apartments we've put in. You know, we have a reason for the 20-somethings and 30-somethings to come. So I, you know, I just, we, you know, like I said, we're a spirited city. We're definitely a spirited city. We've got history, but we've also got future. We're adding a lot of entertainment type businesses, breweries and distilleries and new restaurants. And so I think we're going to be a hotspot in Cobb County.
Where would you like to see Kennesaw in, let's say, five years?
I would love to see a revitalized, thriving downtown where people are out and about, walking and doing stuff together and bragging about their community to other sister cities. I won't say who.
Now, we have some issues here, okay? Because I'm just as devoted to that other city. But go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I'd like to see us, and I mean, with a revitalized downtown, you've got taxes coming in from a commercial base, which help fund your parks and your programs and all the streets and things that you need in a city. So the more we have of that and the right stuff, I mean, not, it's smart growth. We need smart growth. We need to really sit down and think about what we want and what we want for now to 25 years from now. But I see us having a revitalized downtown. I see us having students more involved than they've ever been. And so that's where I see it. But we've got, but I mean, we've sort of got a blank canvas, which is I'm very excited about. If I were in another city doing the same kind of work, it wouldn't be as challenging in some ways, but I think it wouldn't be as rewarding either. Because I think we've just, we're a blank slate. We have so much we can do. We've got so much potential. If you look at our access to 75, you look at the fact that we've got a 32,000 student university in our backyard, we've got an international airport, so we have reasons for big companies, you know, come here and have that option. So I don't, I just see just huge potential, really exciting potential.
I'm excited just sitting next to you. What campaign promises have you made?
You know, I have not made a lot of promises. The one promise that I will make, and I know I'll, I can keep it, is I'll listen. I'll study and I'll listen and I'll ask the questions and I'll find out what I need to find out to make the best decisions. I won't be perfect. I don't think anybody is. But I've always been sort of a journalist by nature, so I like to find all the details. I like to hear all the sides. I like to see, you know, everything, different ways, different people. People come from different perspectives because they came from different backgrounds. And so we don't all want the same thing, but you know, at least we can find out what people want and talk.
So for those out there who tuned in, just now tuned in, and they're like, "Okay, who says Tracy Byers? Who is Tracy Byers?"
Man, they, they must not be out.
Who, who are you? Because you know, there's some people, you know, they're working and, you know, they're watching the show and they just want to know a little bit about you. Just give us a little, I want you to paint that picture.
Well, you know, for starters, I'm a mom, as we established. I'm very proud of that, love my boys. Secondly, I am a pretty active community member. As I said, I ran Dinner at the Depot. If you had been out there in the last three years, you would see me because in three years, May to October, I have not missed one episode.
For, for the couch potatoes like me, that's just like, I didn't want to hear that, you know? But that, no, but you are very active.
Well, and I, I can't tell you, I don't have a number, but how many businesses, new businesses I've welcomed in the last three years, you know, with DDA, six years really, but three years as the chair, which that's been great fun. I think of myself probably primarily as a connector. Like I said, it's in my business life, that's sort of my job. I'm connecting businesses with their customers and making them more visible. In my personal life, I'm definitely a connector, always trying to help, you know, put people together that need each other. They're coming from different places, from different perspectives. And I'm a peacemaker. I mean, for whatever reason, I've always had a great talent in bringing people together even when they didn't think they could be brought together. And, you know, that's important too. We're not all going to think alike, but we ought to respect each other.
So for the kids out there, because it's important for me that we have, you know, the younger kids out there to get involved. Now, how can they get involved in your campaign? Let's get to the campaign. What's your platform? I understand you're, you're running, we all know that you're running. So for someone who wants to volunteer, get involved, you know, knock on doors.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
If anybody wants to come walk with me or, you know, claim a place in their neighborhood where they can go talk, I would certainly appreciate that. I'm going to be hitting a lot of doors myself here, so come into a neighborhood near you soon. If they want to help put up signs, I'm looking for some marchers for the Big Shandy Parade. You're coming, right? You're coming.
Did you have to put me on blast like that? I mean, did you really?
Look for tagging in the parade.
So I guess you volunteered me. I guess I'll be at the Big Shandy Parade walking with, you know, New Councilwoman Tracy Byers. I'm speaking mental existence.
Wearing that. If they want to talk in their circles, share social media, that seems to be what, the younger people are very good at the social media, that would be a big help.
Now, for someone who lives in the community, what can we do? Because what I would like is more engagement, people who, to be more engaged. What can we do? Because other than going to work and coming home, how can we become more engaged in the community?
That's a great question. And yes, and something that, I think a lot of people aren't aware, you know, I think some people don't get engaged because they don't know where to jump in. The city of Kennesaw has very many boards and commissions and authorities. There's positions that come up, people move, their jobs change. They sort, they cycle out because they've done their four-year term or two-year term or whatever. There's an Arts and Culture Commission, there's a Downtown Development Authority, there's a Development Authority, there's a Historic Preservation Commission, there's, there's just, there's a number of things you can get involved in. And what you need to do is go to kennesaw/Georgia.gov and go to Government, and there's a place in there that describes all the boards and what they do. And you can fill out an application, look at the ones that you're interested in, mark them on the application, and when they have an opening, they'll call you for an interview or, you know, call to see if you're interested. Another thing that people can do is come to the city council meetings. Let the council people know what you think. I mean, let them know, you know, what's working for you and what's not. And I, I've always been a big cheerleader for the city and everybody makes fun of me for that. And, but, you know, we could use some more cheerleaders. And so I think if you come and you know what's going on and you can spread the word, I'm always surprised. When I would be setting up for Dinner at the Depot, even though we've done it for six years and I was, we had it on a major street for three years, I would still have people drive up and say, "Is this a festival?"
Yeah.
I'm like, "Yeah, festival we do every Monday." But it's amazing what doesn't get out. So I, you know, the more people that are, are in there and involved and engaged and spreading the word, I mean, I think it just brings more to everybody. And the perception, you know, Dinner at the Depot, we would have businesses who were thinking about coming to Kennesaw, come down there to check it out. See what kind of lifestyle we have, you know, see how our people are, you know? And we have a ton of fun down there.
Well, what I want to say is, I was introduced to Tracy. And when she says she's a cheerleader.
I was.
I know. She was just so perky and exactly what you see is what you get. Because she was just welcoming, she knew I was starting Women Are Worthy and how can I help, what can I do? And I'm like, "Okay, tone it down." And I'm usually the hyper one. So to see someone who's more hyper than me, I am like, "Oh my God, is this how I am to everyone? Oh my God." She was, all you need was your, you know, your pom poms.
Well, the energy really has, has helped me be able to do these things, unfortunately. And I mean, you know, I exercise every day. Haven't missed a day in six and a half years.
Okay, let's talk about the power walk, the Tracy Power Walk. That's a little bit off topic right now, but you know, the fact that you're running, because I also want to talk about women in government, because more women are running for offices. So we're going to talk about that as well. So what's this thing about, I notice when you're walking or whatever it is you're doing, you have like 228 slash 22... What is that?
Well, today I think is 2297 of 2297 days. Basically, I have not missed a day in 2,297 days of power walking. I mean, through sick, through cold, through work schedules, through kids' schedules, through whatever, you know. I just, what happened was, you know, at Christmas, as a mom, you shop for two months. It's endless. You spend a bunch of money, you spend all this time, and then the kids rip through the presents in like 30 seconds. It's over. And then it's like, what do we do for the rest of the day? So that night, six and a half years ago, I went out on Christmas night and started, just walked. And for whatever reason, there was another book at the time, and I won't say the subject matter, but a lady had written about doing something 365 days a year. And so I thought, I wonder if I could do this for 365 days. So I started doing it and I started posting it more for accountability for me.
Right.
But then other people would start, if I hadn't walked, you know, by noon, let's say, but they'd start sending me notes. "Are you not going to go today? You're not going to break your record, are you?" So now it's become such a record, I can't break it. And it's been kind of fun. I didn't mean it to be a identifier or a visibility thing, but I'll be at Target or Walmart and somebody will pass me and I can see that, they're looking at me like, "Where do I know you from?" And eventually they'll circle back around and go, "You're the walker!" And I'm like, "Yeah, guilty as charged." But it's, you know, it's a, for me, it's a consistency thing, it's a commitment thing, it's a commitment to me. I always say, you know, when you take care of you, you let other people know you're worth taking care of as well.
Exactly.
So that's just something I'm, I'm big on. And, you know, Kennesaw has sort of led the way in this area as a healthy city. We have 65Ks, we have beautiful parks, you know, we're working on more green space. We have, I can't even tell you, it's some crazy ridiculous number of programs at Parks and Rec that you can take. And lots of them are yoga and exercise and gymnastics and so, yeah, I mean, just all kinds of offerings. So, you know, it's a, it's a big thing to me and it's, I think Kennesaw's led the way. I mean, I heard the race director or the person that runs the race directing company say that other cities are calling her, asking how, you know, how does Kennesaw do this thing with 65Ks? You know, how do we do it? How do we plan one? And so I don't know, I think it's, it's great when somebody wants to be like us. I love that.
Exactly. I, I agree with you. So what do you think about, what is your stance on women's, why should women support each other? Why is that important to you?
It's very important because I think there's such a history and maybe it's a myth about women not supporting each other. And why would you not support each other? I mean, you shouldn't, you shouldn't worry about what other people have and don't have. You should worry about, you help other people, it comes back to you tend to. And I think, you know, women just need to do a better job of that. I mean, but women need to support men too. I mean, you know, and since you talked about women in politics, I mean, I think, you know, obviously the most qualified candidate should get that, no matter what their gender is. But I think women bring a different perspective.
And that's what I like because now you can't turn on the newspaper, turn on the phone without anyone, you know, without seeing another woman running. So my question to you, so often we think about, you know, maybe I should or I'm on the fence. What was the deciding factor for you, Tracy Byers, to say, "I'm..." Because you're putting a lot out. Let's face it. Because when you're running for office, you're up for everything and your business is out there.
Everybody's watching everything you do.
Exactly. Your family and everything is subject to any kind of criticism. What made you decide to say, "I'm going to do it, number one"? And what was that conversation like with your significant?
The reason why I decided I was going to do it, well, the position came up, obviously.
Or the boys.
Yes, the boys. The position came up, obviously. And I had been so involved with DDA and just like so excited and so looking forward to what we had going on. And I mean, it was a tough decision for me because I was leaving just as they were setting a lot of stuff up for their year. So it was a very tough decision. And I'm still sort of consulting with them, but they've got new board members. They've replaced me in a couple of other spaces that they had. So it was a hard decision to make. But as I thought about the last election, and as I said, the guys that got elected are all very well qualified, but thought about some of the elections in the past, and I thought, "Who better than me?" I mean, I've got the backstory, I know the people, you know, I know the stories, I know the connections. I know what that used to be and what that is planning on being and, you know, what to expect from who. And, you know, I had worked enough with the city staff that I knew the dynamics there. So my feeling was, "Why not me?" I don't, I don't, you know, it was just, it was time. And so it's very exciting. I mean, I feel like I had a big impact with the Downtown Development Authority. I think I can have an equally positive impact with this. And, you know, hoping the voters give me a chance to do that, Vote Byers on May 22nd, because I am looking forward to doing what I did for the DDA, but, you know, doing it in a more widespread way and reaching different groups of people. I mean, I just, you know, Kennesaw's a great city and we have people, we have, you know, people of all different colors and genders and national origins and, you know, economy. And, but it's wonderful and we can work with everybody.
So I'm glad that you're mentioning that. But do you have anything you'd like to tell the, that you'd like to talk about that, that would convince someone who's on the fence or, you know, when I don't need to vote? Please speak to the reason why people should vote, especially the local, especially the local. Oh my God, please, let's go.
There you go. Well, I, you know, I think my experience sort of speaks for itself, but I'll speak for it too. You know, as I said, I've been here, I've been in the city for 21 years. And I've seen all the different facets. I've, I've been through the schools, I've been through the parks, you know, I've been through the sports programs. You know, as I said, I've been in great connection with different people from different walks of life here. I've seen projects come and go, I've seen things get approved, I've seen things not get approved. I've seen, you know, I've worked with city staff, I know, like I said, I know the dynamics there. I grant you one thing, I will not make a decision unless I have turned over every stone and found, you know, every way to think about it. That's just who I am. I think I'm, always been accessible and available, and I think that's important in a candidate.
Yes.
I work here all day, I live here all day, I spend the great majority of my time downtown or in and around Kennesaw, so you can find me. I, I listen, I like to listen, I like to hear people's stories, I like to hear, you know, other people's dreams for the city and their vision. I certainly have my own, but, you know, I think.
We'll talk about that, we'll talk about your vision.
I certainly think my experience will, will, would help in this role, very much so. And the number of people I know and my ability to connect people and, you know, just fact find and find things out.
You know, when she said connect people, she's telling the truth. Because I had a conversation with her. I'm not saying that she would be lying, but you know, I'm telling you the truth. I'm co-signing what she's saying. And I was talking to her about something and she says, "You know what? I know someone who can do this and I know this." And I'm like, "Darn gone Tracy, you're better than the male. You know everybody." And I love that about you.
Sometimes I feel like I do. And, you know, I love helping. If I can, if I can help two people, I'm very happy to do it.
You know, you're, I think you're qualified. So will you continue to have this open door policy once you're elected? Because you hear, you know, cases that people are saying they have the open door policy, but once they get elected, it changes or it changes them. So.
I don't, you know, I can't change because it's honestly who I am. I mean, I'm an accessible person anyway. I just, you know, I can't imagine, I mean, obviously there's, when you're on, in a situation like that, there's confidential things that you have to keep. But it's just who I am. I love being out. I mean, you'll, every parade, every festival, you'll see me floating around, whether I'm on council or not. I'm always there because there's friends there. And, you know, those are the people that I like to hang out with. And so, yeah, I, I'm, I'll always be, I've been accessible, you know, with DDA.
Well, I'm going to ask you something that she's probably not going to want to answer, but she will answer on this show. And this is on script. What's your favorite, other than power walking, what is your favorite thing to do in Kennesaw? I'm just nosy.
Good question.
Because I can't answer it myself.
I mean, we have some great restaurants and eateries. I love to eat.
She sure does.
That's one reason why I exercise. We have, you know, I just, we have sidewalks everywhere. You can walk around everywhere. We have, Swift Cantrell Park's beautiful and so much to do there. And my boys were literally raised there. And so, and of course I live in Legacy Park, which is a beautiful place. But I love nature. I don't know, if you follow me on Facebook, you'll see I take a lot of nature shots. Just being out in nature makes me feel, I don't know, one with it.
So when you said one with it, how important is it that women, because we need to really talk about this and I want you to speak about this. So often, we're so busy nurturing and taking care of everyone, we're not taking care of ourselves. Can you please speak to the importance of self-care?
Self-care is super important, I feel like it. I mean, when you take care of yourself, you tell other people, "I'm worth taking care of." And you, you know, if you're, you know, ragged out on the edges and burned out and tired, you're not doing yourself or anybody else any favors. I always sort of wondered about those volunteers that would volunteer their time, but then be mad about being there. You're not doing any good, you know? So, but if self-care is very important, you can't take care of other people if you can't take care of yourself. Plus, I think with kids, you need to be a model, you need to, you know, role model. You need to show the kids they need to take care of themselves.
Reach it, reach it. You're just, you're really refreshing. And it's not, you know, you're in local government, you're voting, you're, you're running for office. And honey, I take my hat off to you because.
It's not easy, can I tell you that?
It's not. But I, I really, you're gumption. And for those that's like, you know, just, the fact that you're doing this, I so respect you for doing this. I appreciate you wanting to make Kennesaw great or greater. You know, because I'm not going to say, we do live in a city that's great.
We are already great, yes.
Yes, we just want to take it to the next level. So I appreciate you doing what you're doing.
You know, I just, I mean, I honestly have a great passion and love for this city. I've been here, you know, longer. I'm, I'm not from here. I grew up in Tucker, DeKalb County. But this has been my home. And now I've been here almost longer than, than my home. So this feels like home now.
Well, hold it against you.
I'm in my second house in the same development, if that tells you anything. We're out of one and moved into the next. So I have a great love and passion for the city. And, you know, like I said, I think we're, we're like, you know, we have a clean canvas almost. We have so many opportunities to do so many things. And we've got great people coming to check on us. And, you know, we're, now the perception for Kennesaw is that's a great place to be. And, you know, with Kennesaw State, we certainly have a very educated workforce. So business loves us. So, I mean, just so much great that we can do and have and be.
If you could change one thing, not that you're criticizing at all, let me make that perfectly clear. If you could change one thing in Kennesaw, I don't want to say change, that's the wrong word, improve.
Improve one thing.
What would you like to improve?
The easy answer for me is I really do want to see a revitalized, thriving downtown. I think that's the one area I feel that we fall short. And I'll be honest with you, I love our sisters, sister cities, Acworth and Woodstock. But sometimes it gets really old hearing about how great their nightlife is. And I went to Woodstock a couple of weeks ago to go to a concert and there were more people from Kennesaw there than there were from Woodstock. And I, you know, if we can keep it in Kennesaw, if we, you know, then our residents pay to do things. We're supporting business owners who are in our community. It all gets cycled back in our community. And I think, you know, I always say, "Keep it in Kennesaw." I mean, it's great to go visit those other places. And certainly both of those cities are amazing places, doing amazing things. But, you know, I want to offer our residents an opportunity to stay closer to home, to get what they need, to enjoy themselves with business owners who are also part of our city.
Well, with that said, I don't want to obviously leave the show without you giving yourself a shameless plug.
Oh, there you go.
So let's do more shameless plugging. Again, if there's someone out there who, "You know, I like that gal. How can I get in touch with her? I want to volunteer. I want to donate. I want to do..." How can they do that?
I have a website for the campaign. It's Tracy, I'm going to spell it, T-R-A-C-E-Y with the number four, kennesaw.com. And please vote on May 22nd. Just be involved, be engaged. It makes a better city when more people are involved, more people are part of it. And we want you to come out and be part of it.
And again, for a woman who, she lives, she lives here, I mean, I'm telling you, she is the 411 of Kennesaw. You don't need to pick up the phone or go on, what is it, Yelp? You don't need Yelp.
Maybe we should start charging them that.
Ooh, I get a percentage of this. Because it's like, if you want to go anywhere in Kennesaw, you can ask Tracy, "How's this restaurant? You know, how would you rate it?" Or Tracy, "I want to go bike riding." Or Tracy, "I want to do this." She, I'm telling you, she's a wealth of knowledge. She lives here, she works here. She's just a bubbling person, but I just cannot wait for, you know, the results to come in and for you to actually sit up, get sworn in and sit on that seat. Because I think you would be a great addition as city council.
I so appreciate that. I really, really. Really, you know, I really hope that I get the opportunity. Really, you know, I really hope that I get the opportunity. Please vote for me. Um I just, I've got, you know, I've got a lot of ideas, I've got a lot of background, I've got a lot of experience. I'll be here all day, every day. And um, you know, I just think I can, I can do some good there.
And I think you can, because I've been around, as you know, some of the candidates and everything when they were running and winning and things like that. And, you know, I'm passionate about Kennesaw. I'm Very passionate. To meet someone who's equally passionate about Kennesaw, I love where I live, I love everything and I love what you're doing. And we want to thank you for being part of the Women are Worthy Show and You know, near us, you will see us at the Big Shanty.
Yes, the Big Shanty Parade, April twenty-first.
I'll be walking with Tracy.
Yes.
Here you go, Women are Worthy.
Women are worthy.
With that said, tune in next week on Monday at seven PM, we're going to have John Stringer. It's going to be, I'm telling you, you don't want to miss that show. I promise you, it's going to be Exhilarating, to say the very least. So tune in next week at seven o'clock. Don't forget to follow, like, share the Women are Worthy Show. Follow us on Instagram, the Women are Worthy Show. Follow us on Facebook, the Women are Worthy Show. So again, guys, have a wonderful, wonderful day. We'll be spending more time with Tracy. I'll be on, doing a lot of stuff on Facebook with Tracy. So again, don't forget to vote for Tracy. Don't forget to vote for Tracy. When is the voting day?
May twenty-second.
May twenty-second, come out and vote, you know, register, come out and vote, because you got to vote. Kennesaw is great, we're going to make it greater. Bye, guys.
Kennesaw.